Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting for May 10, 2023. I'd like to have you all join me in a pledge of allegiance, if you would. Pledge of allegiance.
....................................
If we could all just take a moment of silence? Thank you.
Broadcasting live.
Oh, yes, and we are broadcasting live on WHCA. Thank you. So, we're going to be going into executive session first to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining, sorry, bargaining or litigation, if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And I'll lead a roll call vote to go into executive session. Let's start with Mr. Boyce.
You need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion first.
Yeah, motion.
Second.
Second, thank you. Start, Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. David?
Yes.
Yep. Hillary?
Yes.
And Beth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're... Okay, we're back in full meeting here. Next on our agenda is public comment. Anybody have anything for public comment? No? Okay, moving on, student advisory report.
I don't think we have one to...
Oh, no reports today.
Okay. Move on. Excuse me.
One awesome, Mr. Scriven.
Yeah, right, we're flowing.
Yeah, an easy one.
So, the meeting minutes would be next. We have on the agenda the March 15th, April 5th, and April 12th. Could we take these all together, or does anybody have any?
I think we should do them one at a time.
One at a time?
Because I have something.
Sure, absolutely.
Motion to accept the minutes of March 15th.
Second?
Second.
Okay, in discussion from March 15th.
I think the record of the vote for Unit D, I'm pretty sure that I abstained from that. I don't know how to check, but I wasn't in for the executive session.
Yeah.
So...
You didn't vote.
Yeah, you never do.
Right. So...
Okay, is that something we can amend? Everybody?
Motion with the amendment?
Right.
Second on the motion with the amendment.
Who had the motion?
I just said you need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Mr. Boyce has the second, okay. It's all in favor of the amended meeting minutes for March 15th, 2023? Okay, that's everybody's unanimous. All right, thank you.
No, I didn't.
Oh, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
I'm going to abstain.
Oh.
I just have discussion I wanted to add on the minutes.
To this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I had emailed administration, I had a question because the language of the assessments that we voted didn't necessarily align with what I was reading with the Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16. So, I don't know if you have any feedback?
John, you want to speak to that?
It's Chapter 71, 16B, capital B.
It's capital B?
So, Chapter 71, Section 16B, capital B.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to pull this up, just because in Section 16, there are subgroups of A through R. So, I was reading that letter B, and it said, you know, that this vote is, the district can sue or be sued, and I knew it wasn't related to the assessment. So, I just want to pull up 16 capital B, and that's... Okay, budgets and apportionment of expenses? Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks, John, for the explanation. Appreciate it.
Okay, so, that's my bad for not asking for discussion. Can we just take that vote?
Sure.
On the motion to amend? Steve?
David was motion to amend, I was the second.
Yep, so I'm starting with you.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. David?
Yes.
Yep, Hillary?
Yes.
And Beth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, for April 5th, 2023?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, and...
The second?
Second from David, okay.
Second.
In discussion on this one?
Aren't they talking to you? No.
Mr. Chair, so are we doing everything roll call?
You don't have to.
I don't think that's necessary.
Nope.
I just wanted to be sure.
Yep.
You know, Mr. Small was on a plane heading back from Vegas.
Right, he wasn't able to join himself. Yep.
He's watching.
He can't get us from $35,000.
He's streaming it.
He's streaming.
John?
Sure, I just wanted to make a note that there's in the minutes, and it's more of a question. So, there's a lot of detail in regards to public comment and what citizens have said, but when it comes to discussion of the elected officials here on the committee, there's not much detail or context. And I didn't have a chance to go through the whole meeting and look at particular comments that maybe I would have made that wanted to be included, but I know in particular, you know, it mentions on page four about the leases. This was the meeting where we talked about the regional agreement. And in the minutes, just say there was a lot of conversation over leases. So, you know, I'm not prepared to vote in favor of this because I feel like this is such an important document with the minutes. I think it should really reflect more of the detail and the conversation because it's related to the regional agreement. I'd maybe be in a position to table these, make a motion to table these minutes for April 5th, just to have them reviewed, to make sure that we're fully representing the conversations that went on about the different things. Because I know for the leases, that I brought it up before, that especially the town of Hanson lease should be looked at because they are, the town is making improvements to the fields that are at the school for the district, and that's not included in the minutes.
Okay. Everybody good with the table on this until it's reviewed? All right? Okay, thank you.
Do we need a vote on that, or?
I don't think we do.
No, okay.
April 12th, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Second, yeah, in discussion on April 12th. Don?
One last correction, I had emailed on the date. I don't know, Jennifer, if you've got that? There's just a clarifying where it refers to the start times and that you would look at it in September of 2024, and then present it in January of '24. So, I'm wondering if that September 2024 should say September 2023?
Yes.
FY '24.
FY '24, but right, September of '23. That was page six specifically.
Sure, yep.
So moved.
Okay.
To amend.
Second.
To the length of Miss Byers.
Okay, David was the second, so we'll...
Thank you. So, that's page six, yeah, it should say September 2023.
Okay. All right, any discussion on the amendment? Nope. Start with you, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Yep, Michelle?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I'm a yes. David?
Yes.
Yep, Hillary?
Yes, yes.
And Beth? All right, next time I won't ask for a roll call.
We can hear, we can talk, that's all.
All right. Okay, next is the superintendent's report.
Okay, so, town meeting held a week ago on Monday. I got the opportunity to go to Whitman. Some very spirited conversation in the town of Whitman. I think we dismissed it about 11:25. I want to say thank you to the taxpayers and the people that came to town meeting for supporting the school budget without question. There were no holds on the regional school district budget, and the folks who supported our capital items of technology, of switches, and interactive boards. So, very much appreciative of town of Whitman. I did not go to the town of Hanson, but I was in constant contact with Mr. Howard, who said the school budget passed without question in Hanson. Hanson did not put our capital items on their town meeting warrant for this meeting. However, I did get a commitment from the town administrator that their plan is to do that in their fall special, which they've traditionally done. The only thing they haven't traditionally done is not put it on the warrant, and I think usually they would pass over it and say they're going to do it in the fall. So, there was that little, you know, difference there, and hopefully through the regional agreement committee, we can make some clarification. So, again, the regional school district budget was passed without question. I think a lot of work was done by this committee, both boards of selectmen and finance committees, and I know we have some work ahead, but I'm kind of riding a little bit of a high because we don't have to start that work necessarily until we start fiscal 2024 in July. So, good stuff coming up for the rest of this year, but again, very much appreciative of the town meeting.
Just go on. On that, I just want to make a comment to express my appreciation to Mary Beth Cottin for her comments about starting the process earlier and engaging with both Hanson School Committee. It's very, very much appreciated that sentiment, so thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
May I just follow up? Jeff, so what does that mean for Hanson schools because they haven't voted the technology yet, and they're planning to?
So, the install of the...
Do we move forward with some of our schools and not?
Yes, so the install will go forward in Whitman, Duval Conley and Whitman Middle, the high school. The folks in Whitman, I think we talked about that actually at town meeting, is that the money is approved once the town of Hanson approves their portion of it, and then the plan is those boards are going over the summer. If Hanson approves it in October, those boards will be purchased and bought and hopefully in by the first of the year. George is heading up that piece of it, so...
Yeah, so there will be that. There will be disparity between both schools. However, we will take what the will of the communities did say, and we are looking to take advantage and take property and start the project obviously after July 1st because it's fiscal year funds for '24, and then we will concentrate on the elementaries in the middle. The timeline has yet to be set because we do know that some of the Whitman middle schools will be on carts because they'll be mobile and they'll be able to be moved if in fact that the vote goes through for a new building, and then if and when, or hopefully when Hanson, if they vote for it, then those schools, that order will be put in, and then the high school will merge with both sets of funding, obviously, at the percentages, and then we'll move forward with that. We are doing the install with our own people for the boards that are going to go onto the physical structure and be attached to the structure. So, we're pretty confident that the team that we have can manage that. We also have two internal people, one from tech and one who's our ed tech coordinator, who are certified in how the board operates, but I will say that if you saw a board from 2005 and you see a board now, it really is like a big iPad. So, like, how we manipulate it is a little bit simpler than how we first, our first iteration of when we had boards.
Lori?
So, what's this going to look like? I guess I have a few questions. So, first, like, what's the opening of school going to look like if one set of students is getting something and another is not? Like, especially also for the staff who have to use the technology? What's that going to look like? And like, how's that going to be sorted out? And second, what are we doing to, like, make Hanson put it on the warrant? Like, I know we have like a handshake, but it seems like it's kind of a really big thing.
Yeah.
You know, like, so, is this from the capital improvement committee?
We, as a...
Which subcommittee is this who puts it in capital?
Capital, the capital and technology subcommittee.
Okay.
Pushed this forward. The school committee approved it all.
Sure, yeah.
And the town of Whitman decided to go through their capital committee and support this.
Yeah.
The town of Hanson capital committee said they were going to, heard what we had to say on our matrix, and the selectmen chose not to put it on the warrant.
Yeah, right.
So, all we can do as a regional committee, we've researched this, is push it there. Only the selectmen can put warrants on the, or items on the warrant, unless, which we found out, is there could be a citizen's petition with 10 or more signatures, and the selectmen would have to put it on their warrant. So, they chose not to do that this year. So, we are moving forward with Whitman, and what, the students in Hanson still, the teachers still have boards, they're just not brand new. So, we're using the same technology that they have been, and we'll get that once and hope it will become a problem if it doesn't go forward on the warrant, I believe, in my opinion, in the fall. But again, I can't, the will of the taxpayer in Hanson to approve that, I don't know.
No, but I think outlining it more, like, if you're boards and switches and things like that to a lot of people, we just kind of glaze over and, you know, but to talk about the implication to the teaching and learning to the students in the buildings, and to say it's happening in Whitman and it's not happening in Hanson, but we're all paying for this, like, you know what I mean? I think that getting something out like that is valuable and important, so something for, I don't know if that would be something for that subcommittee to do, like, I think we talked about at town meeting, like, having like a handout or a pamphlet or something, like, that might be beneficial, I'm not on that subcommittee, to, if we are going to put it out, if it is going to be on the October town meeting at Hanson, to have something like that to explain to the people what it really is and what it's doing, and that, hey, it's already happening in Whitman to these students over there, and our kids aren't getting that. I think that's problematic. We hear the word inequity all the time, and I know that that doesn't really have something to do with what we can control.
Sure.
But, you know...
I don't disagree with you. I think the only thing we have to make sure we're not is trying to influence a certain vote as a school committee of a town. So, I think that we would, we can provide information should those pieces go on.
Yeah.
But, and, you know, I don't think that's a...
We can educate.
We can educate, right. We can educate, right, yeah.
Don?
Through you to Hillary, which subcommittee or capital committee are you referring to? The capital operations and technology of the school district? Or of the town?
Of the school district.
Okay.
To communicate with the capital improvement committee of the town, to tell them what it is. I'm not convinced that people really understand what this stuff is.
Okay.
Because if they did, we might have had a different outcome.
Okay, I can speak to that because I'm the chair of that operations and technology. We did have communication, the chair came to our subcommittee meeting, however, I would, I'm outraged, frankly. I'm outraged, and everyone on the school committee should be outraged that the Board of Selectmen in Hanson made a decision that they don't have the legal authority to do. We need to understand this, and it's so important because, yes, they placed things on the warrant, but it's not their authority to reject something that we voted. We voted it. You don't ever hear them rejecting something from Selsho Votech, which is another regional school district, and the reason why it was on the Whitman warrant at town meeting is because they knew they couldn't reject it. They have to put it there, just like they have to put the assessment that we vote for the operating budget, and they put the busing there. We voted something and it goes to town meeting, and Mr. Farrow just said it was the will of the community of Hanson not to have the technology. That's not true. The Board of Selectmen pulled that ability away from the Hanson voters to vote this technology, Hillary.
Huh.
They pulled it away from the voters, so I'm certain the voters want this in Hanson.
Yeah, I just don't think they...
They do, but they didn't have the ability because the Board of Selectmen did not give the voters that choice. So, we need to clear this up, and it's gone on last year, too. There's always seems to be this idea that it's our request, right? The district's request, and that the capital committee of both towns will review these requests, and they'll decide. If that's really what's going to happen, well, we better give them our entire capital matrix of over 60 items. You know, this district makes its decisions and its priorities, and that's what we did. We prioritized. Superintendent sent, came to us as a committee and decided the priority is the technology this year. We need this. Maintenance is going to have to take a backseat for the year. All of those conversations happened. So, I would like to get further follow-up, and I would like maybe our district council to send a letter to the towns and remind them of what the Mass General Law is, that what the district votes does need to go before the voters.
Yeah, I speak just now.
Sure.
Just a point of clarification, I did speak with district council, and I did speak from a member of MASC, and I did speak with a member of Mars, and the only thing that the selectmen are obligated to put on the warrant is our assessment. Our assessment is our operating assessment, our transportation assessment, and our capital, and again, our capital debt assessment goes on the warrant. That was the piece that they said, if you have a, and I want to say an operational capital item, a want, a truck, they can choose not to put that on the warrant. I'll clarify further, but by what they have told me, and I believe our council, is the town of, or the select board or select people cannot turn away our assessment, that has to go on the warrant. But our wants are a decision that they feel within the community whether they want to do it. Mr. Millie C spoke with us, and he had said that Hanson is putting zero capital on the warrant this year. So, we knew our pieces were not going to be there. Again, Lisa Green said it will be on in October. I'm not thrilled about it either because it creates a differential in how we install our equipment over the summer. You know, it would, we had a plan, you know, and how we do that.
Go ahead. Jeff answered my question.
Okay.
So, but it does, it creates a piece.
My whole thing was, in years past, they put it on the warrant and just passed over it because they knew they were going to bring it up in the fall, so I don't understand why they changed how they do things, because that's different, putting it on.
Correct.
And then you're going to say to the people, we're going to take, you know, we're going to table it, or we're going to pass over because we're going to deal with this in the fall. At least the people know about it and have the, you know, know how. And to not do that, I think is, you know, but I understand that's how they use their free cash. They choose to not use their free cash till it's certified and in the fall, whereas Whitman chooses to use what they know they have, even though it may not be certified, and get things taken care of now. So, that's the difference, and that's, you know, but it does cause a problem like you just saw.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else on town meeting?
Yep.
Thanks. George, strap plan update, please?
I don't think I was going to talk much tonight. So, the strap plan update, first and foremost, I want to say all of what you had in your folder is a draft. What you have in front of you, or what was in the folder, was the whole process and procedure that we did so you could look at. I will say it's a draft because we're still working with Seaside on editing and the pieces. For example, we call something initiatives, they call it goals. They missed one of the dates that we had, so we have to go back and forth. So, this is not something that is ready for primetime as it were yet. The goal is to have that ready to be presented, for you to get a reading draft of it, for you to get some background information, and then hopefully in June, we will go from there. There's also going to be a brochure...
George, can I told you for a minute? What you have in your folder isn't the strap, it's the MTSS document. So, we actually have a strap plan document. George is going to talk to you about the, you have the brochure, but you don't have the language behind it, the draft language, so we have to make, put that in the folder. It's the MTSS documents in the drive right now.
Okay, so you have evidently the brochure.
Yes.
So, the brochure is not ready for primetime either because if you really analyze that, there are some omissions, and there are some grammatical errors, and we're still in the process of going back and forth. The notes have all been in there from the process, and that brochure will be what is presented to the public, what is available, what is available online, what is available in schools. What you also will see for June is the complete and utter, this was the whole process. This process outlines the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats from the SWAT that each school did, that each person did. This also says what are the next steps and how did the whole process go? This is a 19-page document that is still in the review stage, and just like the brochure, and that's what hopefully will be ready for you when we go to June, if not July. We are still actively working with the company. I will say that the outgrowth of this plan, the outgrowth of that brochure then becomes what happens year to year to make this become available. I will say that there's an issue that if we want to look at strengths, we talk about there are good strengths. There are strengths in the curriculum, there are strengths in belonging, there are strengths in many professional development, there are weaknesses, there are threats, and there are obviously things we all need to work on. What happens with this five-year plan if and when it's accepted by you all, that's the big macro view. Then we break that down into yearly pieces in what's called action steps. So, then we would have action steps that we want to work on in year one. We'd have action steps that we maybe need to put off till year three. We have action steps that we hopefully can continue and finish by year five at the end of this all. But that's where people like yourselves on this committee, people like the community, people, the coordinators and everyone else, the principals, that's where we start to plan, is what does year one, what's accomplished, what can we accomplish, what should we attack, what do we need to do, year two, year three, year four, year five. But what you have in this brochure is the snapshot of what our beliefs are, what our core values are, and then what we want to see when students finish their Whitman-Hanson experience. How we get there is the hard work and the roadmap that still needs to be developed. And there's not enough money in the room for a consulting firm to do all that. That's where we, school, connection, all of that has to take place. But this is just, hey, here we're at, and this is what, this version will be what the public sees, has, and what we believe in. What will back it up, and that you'll have a copy on that you'll also see, is this is every single piece of the pie that went into it. All the dates, all the notes that you already had in that folder are in here, all the results of what we're good at, what we're not so good at, what we need to work on, that is all coming. We're just not at that stage yet, and we just wanted to provide you with the latest and greatest update we had.
So, it'll be an action item to vote on, June, maybe July, August. We'd like to get it in process before we start the school year.
Right.
As the five-year plan.
And hopefully some of the action steps, depending on what happens with this committee, and depending on what's happened in your past, and all of those things, we've always talked about, things we want to work on, summer, things we want to do, you know, hopefully this is an opportunity with a new five-year plan that the will of the people in the district, the will of the school committee can sort of all come together, and we can say, hey, how about this piece for that? Do we think this is viable? Do we think this is viable? Do we think communication is a piece with communication that we can work on? And then we make those action steps year by year to hopefully have a consensus and a path of accomplishment by the end of five years.
Anybody else got anything for George? Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Haven't heard from you in a long time, Mr. Stanbrook.
Never missed nothing.
Thank you, everyone. So, I'd like to take the two, my two parts out of order so I can keep with the document order that's in the drive. So, I was going to go over the state aid first and then go over the budget, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Make sure you speak up, John.
As long as you remit to that mic.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. So, the first document, number one, is this one, is the DLS, Division of Local Services. This is the cherry sheet, the state aid list for fiscal year '24. This is the cherry sheet, the state aid list for fiscal year '24. So, the House Ways and Means budget is the budget that's out right now, and that's the column, the HWM budget proposal, and it starts with Chapter 70 at $25,303, and it goes down from there. The Senate Ways and Means has come out with their budget yesterday, but it hasn't been broken, at least as of six o'clock tonight. It hadn't been broken down to every district and every town of what they were going to get, they just have published the entire document. So, this will be updated very soon by the Department of Revenue, the DLS. But right now, this is all we have, it's the House Ways and Means budget. So, if you just take a look at it real quickly, I'm going to skim over them just to hit the highlights. Regional transportation under the governor's budget, you can see it says zero. It wasn't really zero, it's just I hadn't got the end of the year report out in yet when the governor's budget came out, and now that you see that there is a number in the House Ways and Means column for that one under regional school transportation, that's because I got that in. Again, offset receipts, if you look probably down the middle of the page, it says, "School Choice Receiving Tuition." That's in a, that's school choice, and that's not a general fund revenue. So, and you look at the things that I'm going over, it's set aside in its own special revenue fund. So, that won't be in the documents, the comparison documents I'm going to show next. And then the charges, the Commonwealth giveth in the receipts, and then the Commonwealth taketh away in the estimated charges. So, there's a plus and a minus, and the net down the bottom, including the school choice receiving tuition, is $25,821 million if the House Ways and Means budget were to pass. So, document number two is, sorry, go ahead.
Do you mind, John, if we can ask questions, just a couple?
Sure.
So, is the regional transportation there, is that the 100% number? It was supposed to be 100% coming out of House Ways and Means?
Yes.
That is?
Yes.
Okay. And then I had a local area collaborative last meeting of the school year on Thursday evening, and Dipna Thomas, Dr. Thomas, was talking about getting a hold of our legislators, legislators to try to get the per pupil. It went up to 60, I think, in the House Ways and Means, but to try to get it to 100. And it just dawned on me, we really haven't heard much from our legislators this year. I know, obviously, the superintendent is the go-to there, but we hadn't seen that meetings or whatever. So, I don't know how everyone feels or how they stand, but certainly, I think, now that it's heading to the Senate, if what Dr. Thomas from the local area collaborative was telling all of us, that's what I just want to bring back to all of you, is maybe we need to get hold of Senator Brady, either as his individuals or whatever, and just, you know, try to promote that $100, because somewhere, and I don't know, I didn't ask her exactly, but somewhere it's been floating out there, that that's what it should be. So, I just wanted to bring that back.
Okay, so, the next document, document number two, and this is the comparison sheet. It says cherry sheet comparison at the top between FY '24 and FY '23. So, the top part of the document is a comparison between the state aid of last year and state aid of this year, and as you can see, the overall net is $503,949, or 2.01%. But you have to look closely at the numbers there, and where it says regional transportation, you can see that's a $449,379, so $449,379 of the $503,949 is related to our change in regional transportation from per pupil to per miles. So, if that hadn't happened, we'd only be up $54,000 in state aid, or 0.22%, or less than a quarter of 1%. So, that's most of what's going on in the top part, in the comparison between state aid from year to year. The bottom, about the middle part there is the comparison between the House budget and the budget that was voted at town meeting. And again, down below there, it says for a net of total cherry sheet aid, it's $50,000, $50,823 lower than what we have appropriated, the towns appropriated at town meeting. So, again, it's a long way to go. The next part down, it has the state budget process of when it started. The governor's budget starts in March, and these are all the steps that go into the budget. You can add Senate Ways and Means budget, came out on 5-9, that's the next step, but again, I don't have the breakout, so I can't go with those numbers yet. So, that's, as the numbers change, I'm going to be putting this out in the Google Drive, and if someone has questions at a future meeting, they can ask. Next, document number three, now this is fiscal year '23 budget update. Again, we're still doing things by hand, we're kind of struggling with the computer setup at the moment. So, the, these are the revenues through April. Looks like this. And the, I mean, I can go through them all, but it looks like, just really quickly, well, some things are going to be, we've gotten all our money from our assessments, other than the Whitman Middle School feasibility study amount for their debt, and that's because it's not due yet. That's not because they haven't paid it. That's zero, that's down in the middle there of the actual column. Medicaid reimbursement, we still have $57,000 to go before we reach the budget of $195,000. That has, 137 is two quarters worth, so we have another two quarters to go. It's likely we're going to be over by that, on that budget, and we'll have extra money there. Chapter 70 is going to be right on to where it should be. Charter of School Assessment is already $18,000 over, and we've got two months to go, so that's going to be another $70,000 or so that's over. Chapter 71 Transportation is likely to be under about the two amounts that I just said, because it's lower than the one, what we budgeted at 1.426, it's 1.3 something. And then homeless transportation, I'm not sure what that amount will be, and that's kind of the amount that will make or break whether or not we hit our revenue budget. The other two amounts, interest income and miscellaneous revenue, we, again, we're going by hand and balancing bank reconciliations, and once we do them all, then we're going to break them all out, and there'll be numbers in there. Right now, they're very small, but there's more than what's in here, but I don't know the amount yet because we're going through it. So, that's the revenue breakdown on the general fund.
Question, because the Chapter 71 Transportation says zero for FY '23 through April?
Yes, we haven't got anything yet.
Would we normally have?
Yes, if I put the, if I was able to put the end of the year report in by the deadline of October, in October, then they would have given us a half a payment in December.
Okay, okay, so we just missed that timing. So, when is the next payment scheduled?
It's at the end of the year, June 25th, 26th, towards the end.
Okay, so they pay it out twice a year usually, so we'll just see the entire lump sum come?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it, okay. And then the next is document number four, this is the expenditure report, so this is the equivalent, hand equivalent of the Munis expenditure report. Again, it's, the payrolls are through April 30th, and the expenses are only through October. That's because we have to go through one by one every single warrant and classify the cost to the right line item, and we're on November right now. This is another document that's going to be updated as soon as we get November, I'll put it in the drive and we'll have November. The payrolls are in through April, though, so it's a little bit of a hybrid document, you don't usually see that, but that's what we're doing now, given the parameters that we have to work with. And then finally, the document five is just an update to school choice. It changes every month because we get state money, and then we also have costs associated with the school choice revolving fund for the teachers that worked. So, again, over in the column where it says now ending balance of negative $55,000, that's, if the numbers keep going, that will be a negative amount at the end of the year. And what does that mean? That means that some of these costs will have to be shifted somewhere else, probably the general fund, in order to not have a deficit. Any deficit in any fund at the end of the year that can't be made up is a hit to E and D, excess and deficiency. So, if we had $1 million in excesses and deficiency, but we had a deficit in this fund of $55,000, the Department of Revenue takes that $55,000 off, and it would be 945. That's it.
Have you got any questions? Thanks, John. Thanks, John, appreciate it. Regional Agreement Committee discussion, so a couple of things on the Regional Agreement Committee, we're in a pause right now. Chris Howard has resigned, so the committee is without a chair. This committee, once we reorg, will need to revote a person from Whitman and a person from Hanson, and Hanson will have to put a new selectman, select person on the board as well, as Jim Hickey is not running for reelection. But we were in a pause. The last meeting we had, we came up with a consensus document based upon our discussions within each of those committees, and then we came together and drew up a consensus document, and the charge from the committee, the four voting members, was for me to contact MARS and send out that consensus document. Dawn had emailed Chris on the day, actually of town meeting, to have a, to see if that document was available to the committee, and then had asked this to be an agenda item at our next school committee, that's today. So, I'm going to kind of throw that to you a little bit about what we're looking for. I have a consensus document, it's a draft of our discussions, again, and the goal was to send it to legal, to get some of the legalities out of the way, and from MARS to see where it was. Also looking at the 2018 draft document that was approved and not approved, and see if we're still in compliance with the law out of that 2018 draft. But Dawn, I'm going to kind of turn over to you on this.
Sure, thanks. And I had emailed Chris Howard, because he was the chair, and I watched the last Regional Agreement Committee meeting, which was after we had all talked about the consensus document. And during that meeting, some additional information was brought forward to that subcommittee, and I had questions about that information, because specifically at the end of the meeting, it's an hour and 13 minutes, and at an hour and 10 minutes, not to be very specific, but the town administrator from Hanson brings up a topic, and it directly relates to the conversation we just had about warrant articles and assessments being presented at town meeting. So, the language, and this is what I asked from former Chair Howard and Jeff, if I could see what they were, what the final document they were putting together, because it's different than what this committee just saw. The language says that, more or less, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have it in front of me, it was from the video, she points out a certain page and says that, this says that the school district, or that the Board of Selectmen shall place something on the warrant. And Hanson Town Administrator specifically says, "The word shall means you must do this." And the chair says, "So, are we looking to change that language to shall consider?" And she says, "Yes." So, with that simple conversation, it completely changes the dynamic of what our 10-member committee has the authority to do, which is vote something and it shall go to town meeting. That conversation that I watched on that videotape now changes it with one word to shall consider. So, it gives, basically, this committee gives up our authority to the towns for them to make the decision on what goes to town meeting. And that's in the regional agreement, that's what's proposed, and it strips us of all our authority and our autonomy that exists right now as a regional school district. So, I think that's a real important word, and I know that former Chair Howard does mention, if anything in the regional agreement contradicts the law, then it's not possible. But this particular language, I think sometimes you can put something in an agreement and you're giving up your authority. If we voted that and didn't know that that one word, "consider," was inserted into there, we've just voted and given up our ability, and now the towns have the authority to shall consider whatever they want after we present it. So, that was my reason for asking that it come back to this committee before it go to MARS or to legal, so that this committee can see, what is it that the subcommittee just talked about?
Yeah, so, to that point, you know, there's no doubt that it was going to come back to this committee, that that's part of the process. It's just, we're sending it out to MARS and our legal to help us clean up our language that we come up with in our meetings.
Right, but would the distinction and the explanation come back to this committee? Or would it come back as a document that simply says, "This has been sent to legal, this has been sent to MARS, it looks okay," without the information being explained to 10 members here, that we just changed a word, that it completely changes the authority of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District? That's what worried me. So, I'm bringing that forward now for awareness.
Sure, and it's, appreciate that. But I think the process is still solid. It's that the regional committee works through this and then comes back to our poll committee for the approval. So, there's certainly chances to, like you have done, watch the committees, you know, meetings, and, you know, we report back to the committee regularly, and like I said before, we will come back to the committee with a, you know, a final document.
Is it possible we can see what is sent to?
I don't see why not.
If that can be shared with the full committee?
I'm stuck a little, because then I'd have to send it to both boards of selectmen, select boards, and, because now you, outside of that small subcommittee, our committee now has the entire document, so I could send it out to all the parties involved, but...
I didn't mean to speak, I'm not saying send it out, I'm saying send it out once we get it back from the review.
Oh, sure, yes, I think Dawn's asking for it now.
Oh, I don't see a need to do that when we're all aware of what you're talking about, and we're going to have a chance to discuss it when it comes back to us.
So, I've requested a document that was drafted by a subcommittee, and it's not possible to receive that as a committee document?
I'd say we have to consider, like Jeff's point, we're talking engagement with three...
I can send it out to all the folks.
Yeah, as long as we want to do it equally.
Saying it's all or not.
Yes.
Can I?
Well, I'm sure, Hillary, go ahead, sorry.
So, you have a document, and have you already sent it out to F.MARS and stuff?
No, I still have it, no. I'm in contact with Steve Hemmend now, he's on vacation.
So, like any contract or document, when, like a teacher's contract, for example, when we get one to vote on, we see what's been redacted, we see what, if one word has been changed, like it's very clear, I would imagine, is that what, like, because I understand what you're saying, but I think an easy solution would be send it off, but it needs to be very clear that if a word or there's a clause that's been added to the end of a sentence...
Or removed.
Or removed, all of that stuff, it needs to be in red, in bold, and highlighted, so that when we get it back, we all, because like, I don't know, and, I mean, I don't know, I don't have, you know, if I knew that something happened, I might go and watch a meeting, but we have school committee representation on that subcommittee. So, my personal, you know, take is that the representation on that subcommittee is representing the committee as a whole, and if I get a document back and it's not clear what's been changed, that becomes problematic. So, my request would be, which I think if it's a legal document, this is what happens anyway.
Well, be godless of that, Hillary, we, all along the process, we've been looking at documents, here's what it has said, here's what the proposal is. So, that is going to continue.
Right, and I feel like when we talked about it in April, the document we had, had like, here's what the original language says. So, I think, like, I'm comfortable saying, okay, go get it out, check with legal, but whatever we get needs to have every single, if it's a period added or a colon added, like, simple things like that, because to Dawn's point, it's really, you know, you can change an entire thing with one word, with one piece of punctuation, and so just making sure, and it's the same as what we do for a teacher's contract and things like that, you know? So, that would be the request.
Yeah, that's the standard. Yeah, for sure.
My only thing to not sending it out is, I don't want to just give our members a document, when we have voting members from the towns, and I'm not a voting member of that committee, so I don't want to misstep and give it to one group and have some folks on the board say, "We didn't have access."
How long will we have to review the document when we get it? We won't get it the day of the vote.
No, no, so the process here was to send it to MARS to look at what we have, if it's legal or not, then kick it back to the...
What's MARS?
Oh, MARS, the Mass Association of Regional Schools.
Thank you.
Sorry, they were our consultants, I'm sorry. And have our legal look at that. Comes back to the RAC to come back to...
Which RAC?
The Regional Agreement Committee, okay? Comes back to our committee and goes back to both boards.
Got it.
And if they, if you approve it or change it, if it's, the change, it goes back to the Regional Agreement Committee.
We would...
Yep, it can go back and forth, back and forth.
And we fix it now.
So, just long, if you're looking at long game, the long game is, it has to be approved by town meeting, and then the commissioner, and the next town meeting is next May.
Okay.
So, this is still a long process.
Long way, water revisions. But we will have plenty of time to take a look at it.
Correct.
Very well, very good.
Anybody else, Steve?
May I just ask, Dawn, because I saw that same thing about, not what we're talking about, or what we're talking about with the, not that one word, but what you were citing earlier, I've seen it somewhere, can you reference it to me?
Seen what?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm saying that backwards, we'll try to think of this at the same time. Whatever was, not the "consider" word, not that, but going back when we were talking about, and someone just reminded me because...
Putting it on the warrant. Putting it on the warrant, is that what you...
Yeah, yeah, they're putting it on the warrant, I've seen that somewhere. And it's like a deja vu when you mentioned it.
It's interesting that you asked me to prove that point. I would ask the towns, show me where Mass General Law gives you the authority to reject something voted by the regional school district. So, I would ask that, but I can answer you, it's because I looked at it, right? Mass General Law, Chapter 71, 16, letter H, it says, "To assess member towns for all expenses of the district." That's the regional school district.
That's what I thought, yeah, no, I know what you mean.
So, to assess member towns. It doesn't break out, just operating, just transportation?
It was just stuck in my mind, and I knew I saw it somewhere, and I just couldn't obviously put my sentence together, but see that as well, thank you.
So, then would that be caught by legal, to say it's not legal? Is that, or is it...
I'm not legal, so...
No, but I mean, you just cited Mass General Law.
So, one of the pieces that we are working through on the Regional Agreement Committee is the language of capital, okay? So, when, John, we approve a capital assessment, it's debt. But this committee, including the former chair, when we spoke at the Regional Agreement Committee, said, "No, we approve capital, and those are the boards." The cap, so those, we could roll those capital items into our assessment.
Gotcha.
And that would be...
And that solves this.
So, you know, in line item 28B, John has boards under capital, $1.2 million.
Sure.
This to this, and it's the five trucks I want, and all that stuff. And then, that goes on the warrant article, no doubt. It's how we determine that and what is capital. Right now, we have determined, and it's been in play for, and the regional agreement spells it out, capital, debt, transportation, operating assessment. We could actually put those boards and things into the operating assessment. That's a caveat that we've had a discussion at the Regional Agreement Committee, you know? So, and that could come back to this committee and say, "No, we don't want to do that," or "We do want to do that." Have something, Beth?
Nope. Just listening.
All right. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, let's say Dawn's correct, and the legality of this is they're not doing the right thing, what's our recourse? How do we solve a problem like that if this is illegal? We can't just stomp our feet and say, "Come on." Like, what's our recourse? How does that work?
Right, so that's why we have legal counsel, as far as I understand it.
Well, I understand, that's counsel, they tell you it's, oh, no, it is illegal, okay? So, now what do we do about it? So now what do we do about it?
Yeah.
So I would ask, I would...
Go to, like, file a lawsuit?
So this committee has talked about that in the past, except suing the state. I don't know, I think that's a conversation with the town to see where we are. And one town specific, both towns, whatever, engaging in that.
Could turn out that she's completely right and they go, "Yeah, you're right, but we're still going to do it this way."
And then I think our modus operandi has to change in how we assess things.
All right. Limited power.
Right. Under new business, I'm just looking for a motion to reappoint Dr. David Belcher as our school physician. Mass laws say that we need to have a school physician. He's been our physician for, I don't know, 13, 14, 15 years. We give him a stipend of $10,000. He was critical during COVID and he's a resource for our lead nurses and our nurses. So I'm just looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Anybody pose?
We have some guests in the back. The New England School of, New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NEAS is a, an organization that provides accreditation for the high school. Dr. Jones is here, Assistant Principal Dave Fleck is here, and Director of Guidance, or Director of Counseling, Ruth Kerrigan is here. Dave and Ruth were the co-chairs of the process. It's a different process than I went through a couple of years ago. Hillary knows the process well.
Dr. Jones is going to give us an update on where we are with the final report. Dr. Jones?
Sure, thank you. I promise this will be brief, probably only 40 minutes or so. But, no, I just wanted to give an update and I wanted to, you should have a cover sheet with the commendations and the recommendations on it that pretty much explain that 36-page report or 40-page report from the visit. But the first thing I want to do is I want to recognize, and this is the reason they're here, is Mrs. Ruth Kerrigan, our Director of Counseling, and Mr. David Fleck, the Assistant Principal, because as Mr. Simonak said, they were the two co-chairs of the committee that runs this. And for those of you that don't know, this is a very thorough process. There's a self-study involved and this team comes in and examines everything from our school culture right down to the cleanliness of the building and what the hallways look like. And for that to occur involves the whole staff and that involves coordination. And Ruth and Dave were instrumental in doing that. They basically ran that because as the principal of the building, according to NEAS rules, I must step away so that I can't influence that process or the report in any way. So those are the two individuals that ran that. So thank you very much, Dave and Ruth. Some of the things that we're proud of, and I'll just chunk these into some areas on that, on that sheet, you can certainly read about them later, but...
Chris, we don't have that document.
You don't have that document?
No.
I don't want to read the whole document, however. Tell you what, I'll just brief and then I'll go through it fast and then I'll make sure that everybody gets a copy. Under commendations, just a couple areas, one of, some of the things that stood out is collective responsibility. They cited us for having clearly collective responsibility for student well-being, creating an atmosphere of care and concern for students and safety and for our diverse, our diverse population. Another one was high relational trust and commitment that they noticed amongst the staff and throughout the culture of the building for risk-taking, growth, and new ideas to enhance learning being supported so that we could move the school forward in a progressive manner. Opportunity was another theme that came up. As far as offering students workplace readiness, student-led learning in many of our classrooms, inquiry-based learning, transitional services to support students as they move from high school to whether it's post-secondary occupations, schools, or in our post-secondary program through our postgraduate program. And differentiation for students. Just to go, and like I said, I'll just go quickly with this. Commission was impressed with many of the programs and services and wishes to commend the following: the schools, the school community's collective responsibility for the intellectual, physical, social, emotional well-being of every student; the atmosphere of care and concern demonstrated by the faculty towards students; the high relational trust that promotes risk-taking and growth among all members of the learning community; the school community's collective responsibility for the physical, social, emotional, intellectual safety of all students and staff, and actively finding strategies for the needs of the increasingly diverse population, including English language learners; the commitment to try new ideas to enhance learning for every student; the opportunity students have to lead their own learning; the use of differentiation in some content areas; the use of inquiry, problem-solving, and higher-order thinking skills in many classes; the transitional services and specific skills that develop independence and workplace readiness for postgraduate students receiving special education services; the co-taught model that fosters inclusive classrooms where co-teachers often loop with students for two years; the school buildings and facilities that support the delivery of high-quality curriculum programs and services; the clean, well-maintained facility; the wide variety of artistic, academic, and co-curricular opportunities afforded to students. So those are the commendations, really quick. We came up with, because this is the end of a self-study, and like I said, it is comprehensive where we do service, we do surveys of staff, students, community members, and then deep dive into all the documents that we have of what's going on. We realized the three commendations that we were going to get, it was no surprise. We had very open, honest discussions with the committee when they came. The first one was the lack of a written vision of the graduate, where we could all sit and say, yes, this is what we want, but we had no written documents. So what we've done since this visit is we've come up with a vision of the graduate. This is all but finished, we just have to, I got to bring it to my school council and we just have to touch it up a little bit here and there. It reads, "A Whitman Hansen graduate is an engaged, future-minded individual who has foundational skills that can be universally applied and adapted for an ever-changing world." The other recommendation that we got was our curriculum. We're supposed to have our curriculum in a common, accessible format so that all curriculums and all subjects look the same, so somebody could walk in and see them. We did not have that. We've spent all our delayed openings this past year, some of our department meetings, working on doing that. And we've, we've made incredible progress in multiple subjects and we have some cleaning up to do there, but that will definitely be done by the time they come back for their decennial visit. The third one was coming up with a plan for professional development for culturally responsive instruction due to our increasingly diverse population and how we deal with that and professional development for both staff and students so that we can make a stronger community of caring as we grow as a diverse population. Those are the commendations, those are the recommendations. They do come back, like I said, this was a collaborative conference, and what they do is from here comes our school improvement plan, which they asked us to see and they got a copy of, that addresses these three areas. We've been working on it. I have not received a date yet, but in about, I would say, 10, 11 months, they will be looking to schedule what's called a decennial visit and they will come and look to check fidelity of implementation of these three areas that they've recommended that we do. I don't see any issue with that. They will look at other areas, but it won't be as deep or as involved as this last visit where they spent two days here really going through everything. That's where we are with NEAS.
Chris, what does the decennial look like now? What does that visit look like versus what it was in the past?
The decennial visit, well, in the past, you used to take all these things, all these documents, you used to get a list of indicators and elements that you had to fulfill and you would create checkboxes, any school USA, and you would fill those boxes. If you didn't have something, you would make sure you created something to put in those boxes so they could see it beforehand, they'd come and see that you were doing it, and then they'd do their report over the course of four days every 10 years. Now they do this collaborative conference where you put everything together you have, yes, you have indicators and standards, but if you don't have something, that's okay. They're encouraging you to say, "Hey, look, we don't have this," which is what we did in three different areas, well, two different areas and we said we were struggling with one. Then they come, talk to you and say, "Okay, you've met this, you haven't met this, you get graded on a rubric." And then they leave, you take this plan, you create a school improvement plan, they come back approximately 18 months later for the decennial visit. That visit is also two to three days with a smaller number of members and they go through the school. They again hold their student interviews, their faculty interviews, their community interviews, and look through documents that we have. Now it's focused on fidelity of implementation for the school improvement plan, however, they don't turn a blind eye. If they see something, then they report on that and say, "Look, this isn't up to snuff, you need to do that." But the focus really is on making sure that you have improved in the areas that they've recommended and that you are doing it on a consistent basis. And then we start the process again.
Did they have any recommendations that would impact the budget? Like anything they want to happen that might cost money?
Well, professional development, things like that, sure. Different areas such as that, they had recommendations for. But as far as facility management, no, they didn't have any.
So in the past, just to give you an update a little bit for the committee who's not familiar with this association, this association has helped a lot of high schools get new buildings or improvements to their buildings. Because they go in and the first thing they look at is, you know, Pembroke High School's not a good learning, a good learning environment for a 21st century education. This is, I think...
I'm not saying that.
Right, no, no, but they would spell it out and they would put it, when, when I was the principal of West Bridgewater, it was spelled out in the NEAS document of 2006, "You need a new building, this building's 100 years old." And it pushed the town into a fear of losing accreditation. And a lot of schools have done that. So in this, they can't knock the facility a little bit. I think we're in a really good spot because they haven't given you any, any digs on high price or curriculum or organize it, but you're not lacking something. You're not lacking staff. You have good class size, you have good offerings both within the school day and after school. What they want you to address now is your ever-diverse population that is new since 2012. And it's going to cost a little bit, but it's not, you know, $4 million or $125 million school. So it's, we're in a good spot with that.
And, and there's a process for that. If there's what they call substantive change, I have to fill out a form within 60 days of that change. That's if something happens and we lose services in area, if something breaks and we can't replace it, I have to let them know that that has occurred so that our services aren't the same. But it was, it was, I was very proud sitting there, listening to them after all their interviews and after all the work that Dave and Ruth put in, hearing the things they had to say about our school. They were very, very pleased with our school, they said a lot of positive things, so.
I just want to say thank you, and I love that you talked about the vision of the graduate because that's the goal, right, at high school? But I hope that we can expand on that because we're working on the strategic plan for five years and I think our vision of the graduate should start at preschool, right? We want these to, kids to stay in our district and be here, so, you know, maybe as a committee when we work on a strategic plan, you know, that will be K through 12 or pre-K through 12.
There was a lot of discussion around that. If you look at the language of what we have coming out of the strategic plan process, it's very similar to the vision of the graduate. They walk hand in hand, they're right next to each other.
Did you make like a cool image, like, you know, when you look up the vision of the graduate and you look at like what all, some of these schools have and all that, did you guys come up with one?
We do not, we do not have an image. We have the language for it. A lot of times, there's a firm belief in less is more.
Yes.
I don't want something that people, if you walk up to somebody, I want them to have an idea based on values and what we actually do every day. Once we do finalize this, it will be advertised all over social media, it will be advertised on the walls in the school, you'll have posters and so forth. So if there is a design, I'm sure that'll be up.
Thanks for staying up there because Innovation Pathways, we've had a conversation about Innovation Pathways before, it's becoming a reality through the state program, there's funding, right?
It's a reality.
And there's money?
Yes.
There's money, yes.
All right, so give us a little update on Pathways.
For those of you that don't know, we've been talking about Innovation Pathways a little bit and it was talked about for people that were in that summer working group that also looked at early college. I believe the members were Fred, Beth, and Chris, I believe, were there, and Ruth joined them as well. Ruth has also been instrumental in getting this off the ground and starting it with grant writing and so forth, and now Dave has hopped on with site visits and moving that along. But we have been designated to Innovation Pathways High School, and that's a state program that helps students obtain high-level coursework and industry credentials to actually go out in high-demand industry jobs once they leave high school. So we chose, there's five pathways across the state, but what we did is we looked at the regional blueprint, working with Mass Hire, and saw what two made sense for our students. So in other words, in-demand jobs that have good entry points where we could provide industry credentials to students before they leave high school so that if they decide to apply in this field and find out they like it, what they do is then they, they have a leg up on other students coming out of other high schools that don't have that because they're already certified. So they start maybe a rung or two higher up on that career ladder and they advance up that career ladder rather quickly if that's what they decide to do. So we chose business and finance and we chose healthcare and social assistance. So the special thing about this, or what's different from early college with this, is the early college program, very good program, there are some bumps in transportation with colleges and things like that, however, colleges, it's focused on college and it's focused on students going to college. Well, there is college and career readiness, not every career requires college, not every student's going to college. So we want to make sure we hit everybody and offer them an equitable chance to be as successful as possible post-high school. So in Innovation Pathways, when a student comes in and we're going to be aiming it at the eighth and ninth graders and you'll start to, you'll see a press release, you'll start to hear about us going to the middle school and then talking to students here and talking to parents, we're going to put on a virtual meeting for parents. But what that's going to do is we're targeting eighth and ninth graders this year for those two pathways and we are going to cohort them. Now sometimes one of the questions is, well, if you go into healthcare and you get to junior year and you don't want to be in healthcare anymore because really this isn't for me, awesome, it runs in line with your regular high school graduation requirements, you just say, "Okay, I'm done with healthcare" and you move on to the regular high school requirements that we offer. That doesn't work the same way for people going, if you're a junior and you haven't selected a pathway, you can't go into a pathway. You could take some of the lower, cool electives, but you can't get that full certification or those certifications that we offer. And there are numerous certifications that are available to us as we go through. The important part of this is funding, right? Because you need money to make things work with all these programming certifications and partnerships that we're now looking to develop and deepen with community businesses and industries. We have three people that we're working with right now. This has increased our partnership with Mass Hire. And Mass Hire over the past two years, they've given us more than this, but chunk money-wise, it's looking at $30,000. They gave us 15 at the end of last year, they're giving us 15 this year, and then if there's any left over, they said that we could use that. The state, our planning grant, our first planning grant that we were approved for, awarded us $24,000 to help get this off the ground and write the other part of the grant. Upon being awarded the grant, there's an implementation phase. When we were designated a school, that's $75,000 that we've been awarded. And then through MYCAP, which is My Career in Academic Planning, which is associated with Innovation Pathways, and another quick shout-out to Ruth who put us onto this before we even applied for this, and that then found out this is one of the base requirements of Innovation Pathways, they make you go do the MYCAP training that we had already done. They just awarded us $11,500. And that's all for professional development, curriculum revision, any extra program we need to develop courses, which we've, we've done, we've, shout-outs to the teachers that are doing this, there are teachers that have taken courses and say, "Sure, I can make that work and put that in a pathway." And then we've got other teachers that have said, "Okay, I can write it over the next year and we'll be offering new courses the following year for these students that are in these programs." But it's a fantastic opportunity for students that's open to every student for high-level courses, technical courses, so that if they don't want to go right to college, they can try one of these. If they do, okay, they still have these skills and credentials. The certification program or the Innovation Path ends with a 100-hour internship. So we're not talking about going and doing filing or cleaning up for a company, we're talking about an internship where you are involved, you're learning the skills needed to perform well in that job. So that's pretty exciting.
Any questions, Michelle?
When do they do the internship, while they're still in school or is that after graduation?
They do their internship their senior year in school.
And it will be in place of classes or after school or have you figured that And it will be in place of classes or after school, or have you figured that out?
It will be a combination of both, and we have it partially figured out, which is why we had the schedule change that we had before with an eye towards this while we were applying, applying for it. We have that kind of figured out realistically. We may have to adjust the schedule a little bit as far as rotating periods and how that works to make sure those students get out and get there while still getting English and math, unless we work something out where they can get credits, college credits or somewhere along those lines.
And like you were saying, if the student decides somewhere along the line, it's not for them, like junior year, they're still gonna be meeting their requirements to graduate with all the other classes they're going to need?
Not only will they be right on track, I would argue they'd be ahead of the game.
Wonderful. Awesome. So exciting.
It is. It's, we're really happy about this.
Absolutely. It's great.
We, at Pembroke, we, this year is our first year of a Pathways program, and it's very, we didn't get grants or anything like that, so the amount of money that you brought through grants and things is awesome. The seniors don't, the seniors who are doing the Pathways don't come to school term four. So there's a whole bunch of them who are working with our Director of Technology, and they're coming into classes. Like, I had them come in and they taught my students how to use Wii Video, just, you know, recordings and that. So there's a way to do it, but it's awesome because I like it for a variety of reasons, everything you said. The question I have is, who is going, so to connect the students with the internship, are you looking to hire somebody? Is this gonna be a guidance thing? Is this gonna be the students doing it on their own? Like, are you gonna have a Pathways coordinator? Or do you sort of already have that as like a stipend position?
I almost touched my notes when you said Pathways coordinator. We're looking to hire a part-time position through the grant that's covered by the grant to organize the idea of what internships look like and to first foster relationships with businesses that will cover these internships and then create these programs alongside these businesses and look for new opportunities. To start off, that's, we're looking at a part-time position to do that or a stipended position because realistically, if we're starting with our current freshmen and current eighth graders that are gonna be next year's ninth graders and 10th graders, we're not really gonna be in need of full-on internships that would put a full-time position to work all the time until two years. But until then, we have somebody that can, that can arrange, well, we're looking for somebody that can arrange that. Because it is, it is heavy. It's a lot of lifting, it's a lot of outwork, and it's, it's too much to put on the counselors compared to what they have already.
I have one.
Sure, go ahead, Michelle.
Is there a cap on the number of students that are able to do it each year?
There, there is and there isn't. There's not really a cap. What we're looking at right now, though, will be interesting because we're guessing when we put in the grant, 30 for each pathway, for each grade. So if we get more than that, awesome, we're gonna have to figure it out. As far as sections go. But we would just like those low numbers to get our feet in the water a little deeper and get running with it. We're confident of the program that we have, but of course, whenever you have something planned, no matter how thoroughly you plan, once it starts happening, you're gonna have to adjust on the fly a little bit. We're hoping to get enough interest in the eighth graders specifically, the ninth graders, yes, but especially the eighth graders. So that as they matriculate into ninth grade next year, I mean, it's kinda cool, you're set apart, you're in a new pathway, and then you'll, the eighth graders from the following year will see that, and then there'll be, it'll be more routine, that type of pathway, that parents, community members will understand what it is more.
Yeah, 'cause I know when we were in the group and I explained with Ruth, my, one of my nieces, actually, and also a great niece, did this, became CNAs before they graduated. So they came out with a degree. One used it and went further, the other one didn't. But the one who used it and went further, she is now registered nurse, so with a bachelor's degree. So, but it's a great opportunity that we didn't have before that I think is wonderful to give to the kids who maybe don't go to college but have. And that's always been one of my things, even years ago when I was on school committee, it was like, not everybody goes to college, and we need to help them out. And proud of them, too.
And that's okay, and be proud of them, too, but offer them, offer them the skills to be successful.
Exactly. Wonderful.
Yeah, that, not every kid goes to college right away, right? And so to expose them to these different things and give them a chance to see what they like and don't like, you know, as it stands now, we all play in this pretty high-stakes thing where we expect our kids to know what they want to do for the rest of their lives, you know, when they graduate, and we're shelling all this money. So I applaud it, and I'm happy we're moving in this direction.
We, um, there's, with Tom DeSantis, he's one of our business teachers. He's in touch with a lot of the graduates, he's very involved in DECA, and he's had a number of them reach out to him when they heard that we're doing this. And they're actually gonna come back and talk to the students because when they were here, they built their own kind of business pathway by courses they took and have expressed that they, and they're in business now, they express that they really wish that they had a business pathway. Now we have an official pathway for that and healthcare.
Will you have the courses like listed out in the program of studies for the students so that maybe you have a freshman who's like, I'm not sure that's what I want to do, but maybe I'll take this one? Like, I guess that's my question. Will kids who aren't in the pathway be able to dabble in some of the electives? Or are some of the electives gonna be strict to only those Pathway students? I understand when they get to higher level, junior, senior year, there's a possibility, but freshmen, sophomores, business electives per se, I don't even know if freshmen and sophomores, I mean, I know that their schedules are booked, but you know what I mean? Well, is there an opportunity, if I don't want to commit, can I take one class because I see what I have to take, and then maybe next year I can fill out more things in?
Two answers to that. One, there, there is a grid laid out for, much like if you look at our program of studies, we have courses laid out your senior year, all the way to your senior year, freshman and senior. We'll do the same for Innovation Pathways. If you're in the healthcare pathway, these are the courses you need to take. There will be a taste of that in a brochure that we're putting out to advertise the Innovation Pathways. Dabble, the other answer, is the proper word because they can take some of the lower-level electives, but once they get up to junior, if a junior or a senior wants to take an elective where sophomores are, okay, because that happens in high school anyways. But if they want to take an elective in a healthcare pathway that other seniors take before they leave out on their internship, that's not gonna happen.
Anybody else have any questions for Dr. Jones? No?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is something I had asked to be put on the agenda. And I'm a big believer, because we are a public body, to have any discussions about our committee openly and in public. I think, well, I, you know, it's pretty fair to say that our committee seems to have some issues. And, you know, we recently had our chair resign over some of these issues, which I think is terribly unfortunate. I really appreciate all that Chris did for us and the direction he moved us in. But going forward, I think we need to have a discussion and ask some questions of our, you know, of ourselves about what we want to be going forward. Because I, you know, really would like to focus on this, which is, you know, our mission statement, thank you. Whitman-Hanson Regional School District is committed to providing each student with a high-quality education that promotes student success and responsible citizenship, right? Like, collectively, I, you know, I would like to see us focus on that, and I would like to ask the committee, you know, what do we want for individuals and what do we want collectively for our group? I think this, you know, to say that we have some morale issues is an understatement, right? So I would like to start this discussion, and I would like to continue the discussion, hopefully, in the future about how we want to conduct ourselves and what, what are some reasonable norms and protocols that we want to implement and adhere to. By no means is this any kind of effort to keep someone quiet or keep them from getting information that they want, you know, that they feel they have a right to and whatnot. It's about how do we function most effectively as a committee? So, you know, there's a couple of main issues, I think, is how often, you know, should we expect that individual committee members will reach out to the administration for whatever reason? And, you know, I think we have to come up with some understanding because as it is right now, there's a disproportionate amount of questions coming from some committee members, and it's putting in, you know, a heavy burden on the administration while we're trying to do other things. So I don't have the answers, but I think it's worthy of discussion. The other thing that I need to bring up, and again, we will continue discussion when the full committee's here, hopefully. But when I walk into our joint meeting at Whitman Town Hall between the Board of Selectmen and Whitman, Select Board and Hanson, and our committee, and we are meeting on that night to work through our differences for our budget, I hadn't even sat down, and I was made aware that one of these individual members of this committee had reached out and come up with a deal. Now, again, I'm putting it out to the committee. Is that how we want to operate? Do we want individual members to be, you know, shooting from the hip and reaching out and representing us? So again, I don't have the answers, but I have questions. And I hope we all can, you know, engage in a dialogue, an honest dialogue, where we ask questions of each other and work through some of these things. Because I want to get to a level, you know, where we all feel proud to be a part of this committee and that we're doing good things, but we're not getting bogged down by any individual's, you know, agenda. I think this literally, and I speak openly and honestly, you know, but it's like sandbox. Do we know how to get along? Do we not coexist? Can we, can we, can we work through some of these things together or not, right? So again, I don't have the answers, but I, I would like to hear from you all on how you feel about this and discuss how we want to approach these things going forward. Hillary, I gotta write down these.
So I think, I think that in a couple of weeks, we might have a different committee. And I, I'm not disagreeing with things that you're saying, but I think that it might be a good idea to table this until we have our full committee that we will have after the town elections. In my experience with establishing norms, often it'll be everybody come back with one norm or two norms. I, I'm not sure that saying, you know, let's all hash it out now, we don't have everybody here.
Oh, no, that wasn't the intention at all. This is the beginning of the dialogue in my mind.
My suggestion would be to have this conversation, maybe tell everybody to come in June with some, you know, what are some norms you want, right? The definition of a norm, like making sure everybody understands what that means. And what, you know, what are things we want to see, you know? And then we've done it before where George has the chart paper and he can write it out.
Good job.
I just think.
You want us to stipend for that?
Shush, shush.
We don't have everybody, and we might have different.
Absolutely, right. This was just on the agenda, so I wanted to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, but that would be my, my suggestion. And I'm not trying to dismiss your intent because I think it's valuable, but just to do it at a time when it's going to be truly valuable, right? When we're coming in with our new committee.
I'm in complete agreement with you. Yeah, so again, this is a preliminary discussion. What are we, what's the flavor, right? And what do we want to do as a committee? I have Beth next.
So when I was a member of MTA, we had a set of norms for the meetings, and it was a big poster board, you know, nicely printed in front that everybody understood. And they were things about being respectful of people's choices. You know, not, you know, just to put it in lay terms, you know? In other words, don't get angry because somebody has a different opinion of yours. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, that's why we're a committee here. If we all felt the same way, why bother meeting? So, you know, I think that's really gonna be an important thing to do, and then remind ourselves, because we used to have to do that, everybody please pay attention to the norms of the meeting and do that, you know? And that's what we did, and it didn't always work, but at least it's there, and you can remind people of it if they start going away from the norms. You have something that you've put into place as a group that everybody agrees on. And that's my opinion, too.
Sure. Steve?
And we can all, we are all human. We can all be sometimes a little bit one way and a little bit another way. We're not machines. I looked it up, Chris, when it was on Jensen, the agenda in the packet, and there is a MASC, M-A-S-C.
Mass Association of Schools. Thank you. There you go. Got your bag.
Let me first tell you.
No, I need a cheat sheet.
It's a decade old. But let me tell you, and I want to be honest, this is the end of my third term. A week from Saturday, Mr. Fourth and I get to find out at 5:00 PM or 5:01 what's going on and so forth, and I know there's other, and this is in our candidate's speech.
I don't know, Steve. I hear you.
I still get nervous. I got nervous as the chairman of the FinCom, having to get that group together to talk to everyone, and then having to get up in front of all of you in front of town meeting, even though I knew you. Oh, my gosh. We were building the high school as the finance committee chair. I went and talked to Beth directly. Well, she, she came to our committee meeting from Board of Selectmen at the time. And, you know, I went and I talked to her. We sat in what is the Thai restaurant now, I don't remember what it was at the time, in Whitman Center. And there was like a meeting of a lot of folks, and I just said, I gotta, I gotta, just like you, have to get to Mr. Boyce and find out what he's saying. I have to go to this place. I want to know, you know, just the brass tacks about it. But I am, I, and you get nervous, I was nervous tonight with a few issues, not remembering right away. I'm not saying it's age. Age is the other part. That's a different thing. But you know, that's what it is. And it's tough to all be on board and exact, I guess is what I'm saying. But this was a nice piece, MASC.org, I'm not gonna give you the whole website, Glenn, it's too complicated. But it's, it's from, look at 2012, 2013. School committees sample norms and beliefs, blah, blah, blah. And I don't know, I just always, I like getting along with people. I really do. And maybe there's people that don't want to get along with me. And you know what? When I was little, I knew that was hard to accept. Oh, you stop smiling over there, everyone gets along with you.
Now we got jokes.
That's just from the heart.
If I could say, and I appreciate that, but it's not necessarily about, I don't see this as whether or not I want to get along with Steve Boyce.
Yeah.
I see this as, where's, where do I fit into this committee? What's the goal of the committee? And, and, you know, what can we do together? Like, that's what it should be about in my mind, right? Michelle, you?
Um, a couple of things. I kind of agree with Hillary in the sense that I, I love that you brought this up. I do think it's important. I, I think we probably should wait and to see where we land with elections and have everybody here.
Can I just stop you there? I didn't make a, I guess I didn't communicate it. I didn't intend to come out of here with any decisive.
No, no, and I.
This is me starting the ball rolling.
No, and I was gonna say, I love that it's here, it's preliminary, it's getting the ball rolling.
I want to keep it going.
It's a good starting point, it had to start sometime, and I love that it started. And I'm just saying, like, in agreeance with Hillary, like, let's keep it going, and when, if we have the same members, or we definitely have a new member, and when Fred's here and everybody's here. So I'll just start out by saying, I feel like it's been a rough year, it's been a pretty negative year for us here, there's been a lot of negative things, and my only hope is, as we move forward and we figure out what the norms are gonna be, let's, let's try to remember the positive reasons we want to be here. A lot of good things happen at this school, a lot of, and I've been mentioning this a lot. There's a lot of really good things that go on. We have a lot of good people here, a lot of really great students, a lot of positive things. So for me, I want to always just remember we need to focus on that, that this is a positive experience for everybody. I'm feeling I'm getting emotional about this. There's just been too much negative things slung at this, at these meetings. And it's just not fair.
Yeah.
It's not fair. So if anything, we need to focus on that.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, however we're organized in the future, I would hope we could consider maybe restructuring how we do our agenda, right? And maybe we focus on things like that every meeting.
Yes, for me, I feel very strongly about that.
Yeah, so this, this is again, this is why I want to have this conversation.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Because I want us to come together collectively and move forward in a constructive, productive manner, you know?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, Dan, I'm sorry.
No, no worries at all. You know, obviously, again, as Hillary's already said and Michelle's already reiterated, you know, you're not looking to make any decisions tonight, and I appreciate you for bringing this discussion forward. You know, where I will talk is my own personal perspective. You know, I feel like, you know, from my point of view, this, serving on this committee and being a part of this board for the last three years and serving this term has definitely been one of the greatest honor and privileges of my life. And I've learned a lot in this capacity, and I'm very proud of it. And obviously, with this meeting in particular, I've been a little more, you know, reflective of everything because you never know, right? But, you know, I feel like one of the biggest growths I've had amongst my colleagues on the committee is our culture and our rapport to each other. And some of the big things that have helped me personally as an individual grow in that capacity with each other is just building that rapport. I know, Chris, you and I, we've gone out to coffee. Steve and I have, I've gone out with several people with coffee. Beth, we talk, Dawn, you know, I go out and we just share our perspectives. It's not to talk about the agenda or business because that's not what we're here to do. Deliberations go on here. Deliberations go on here, but it's always great to just hear, this is where I'm coming from, you know, this is why I said this, these are why my actions are this, because, you know, it's reflective of this and this is my understanding and we can grow and build a rapport. And I know in my capacity, I know if anyone looks at the candidates form a few years ago, you know, I certainly laid it to Mr. Boyce, but I'll tell you what, Steve, you know, I, I have immense respect for you as a person and as a school committee member and I feel like the rapport we've been able to build has gave us a great understanding whether it's towards school choice or universal full day K or the work we put together with a five-year plan on the budget subcommittee. I feel like the time that we've taken to understand each other as individuals has helped with our growth and our ability to get things done as school committee members. So I feel like there is, you know, two facets to it. There is the individual and, you know, how you look at each other and your responsibility. And I always say to myself is, you know, I may not always agree with your position and I might not agree with your vote, but I respect you and your character and your position and I respect your vote. And when we leave these meetings, I'm not sitting here going, this so-and-so voted this way or that way for this particular thing, you know, I feel this way towards them because I know where you're coming from and I respect that because it's from a genuine place to improve the district and the lives of the people in it. And, and, you know, when I go home and I pace and I reflect upon everything, I know we have a great group of people and I try to remember that and try to ask myself, you know, what can I do as an individual, what's my role to help improve upon that, especially, you know, technically Secretary of the School Committee, we have that leadership capacity and you as Vice Chair for several years and now as Acting Chair, you know, what can we do to improve upon that and to lead and, and to improve the lives amongst each other and, and obviously our constituents and the students and that's kinda what we're here to do and, and the life lessons that come with that. So I think the, you know, the greatest thing I've learned in the last three years amongst working with each other is, is trying to understand what each other, or understand each other and you may not agree with their perspective, but you know where they're coming from and you know what their intent is and you know the content of their character. And when you weigh that out and you can say this person's a good person and what they're doing and the actions they choose to take is because they genuinely feel as if it's in the betterment of the community, then I can sit back and say, I respect this person, I agree with them and I can kinda move forward and that's kinda what I've learned last couple of years.
Yep. And I think what you were saying earlier is, it's the dialogue piece that you were able to, you know, make those inroads in terms of your relationships, right?
Right, right, because, you know, people certainly have treated me better the last few years and, and I think respect is a two-way street and as we say in school, you know, the golden rule, treat others the way you want to treat yourself.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, so I'm just saying like, that's kinda my approach is, is I wanna have the dialogue. I wanna hear from everybody. I want us to formulate a vision for what we wanna be, you know? I'm a big believer in, in systems dynamics and systems, you know, any system, you have your principles, you have how they interact and your stated purpose, right? Or function if your respiratory system, whatever, right? So here are the principles, right? We have a stated purpose, well, how do we interact to achieve that purpose, right? That's what I wanna get at and I wanna be able to hear from everybody to, you know, come up with a solution, basically, yeah. Dawn? Sure.
Sure. I've listened to your opening remarks and I, I will add that I don't know why Chair Howard resigned. I only know what he said in open meeting. You, you alluded to issues, so I can't, I, I don't know that, what his, his personal, you know, opinions were. I think our, our goal here, I do know what our goal is, right? Is, is taking care of the students and the staff in this district. And have I made requests for information from the superintendent? Sure I have. Those requests come on the basis of needing to make informed decisions, right? Data-informed decisions. So if, if me as a committee member needs more information that, that is, the administration has available, then I guess I'd like to know what's the best way to, to accomplish that.
You're asking me? I'm asking everybody else.
No, that, that's a rhetorical, you know, going forward, we can work through that because if, if our goal is to understand, you know, setting a budget or, or making informed decisions and, and someone needs more information, is, is it wrong to have asked for more information if it should be available? So that's sort of where I'm coming from and, you know, I think likewise, working together obviously is so important. So maybe something we can discuss in the future too is if, if a committee member has concerns with another committee member and, and comments they've made, how is that resolved, right? Because in the past, it's, it's been communicated to me that a, a committee member has gone to the superintendent who then wanted to communicate to me what another committee member's concerns were about a comment that I made. And, and my response to the superintendent was, I'm sorry you were put in that position because that takes away the time of what you should be focusing on. My email and my phone number is available and I'm happy to talk to all nine members, even if it's a difficult conversation, even if it's something someone doesn't like about me, I, I will respond to your email, I will respond to a phone call. So I'm, I'm sort of making that open appeal if, and, and I hope that the, the nine of you, if I reached out, would be willing to have a conversation to talk, to, to improve relationships, right? So that's maybe another norm. We can talk about interpersonal, you know, how we work together.
Yeah, I think it should all be on the table.
Yeah.
And again, I think we should, whatever we do, it should be based on what the committee wants to do, right? That's the nature of being on a committee as far as I understand it, yeah.
I'll throw something in. I guess I'm coming up on a year, I think, so and I haven't felt any negativity. That's, I mean, this has been great, you guys all treated me great, you know, thanks for bearing with me and I'm, I like every, you know, all I wanna say is I'm happy. So I mean, if, if, if this needs to be improved, then to me it's only gonna get better.
Yes.
Because I'm, you know, I expected it to be much more negative than it actually was, so this is nice. Thank you.
Nice.
Good way to end that conversation. Yes. And then it's just, we gotta set it at our next meeting, right?
So the next meeting will be the Monday after the election at six o'clock, just letting, you know...
Which is...
The 22nd. It's a six o'clock meeting.
May 22nd?
Yes.